Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the planning commission for, um, what is it called? I don't know. The 10th of January of 2011. We're a little heavy on this side. We're green and yellow, but the rest is chill. Um, first off, I'd like to call meeting to order.
And, um, I'd like to welcome our two newest planning commissioners, uh, Paula Espy and Denise McGriff, who is vacant, but she's sitting in the back hiding, I believe. So, uh, welcome aboard and, um, we just went through a very intensive, uh, negotiation or negotiation interview process. And we negotiated, you know, and, uh, chose both of these folks. And then there'll be two more, uh, announcements, I believe shortly. And, um, we will change some hands up here. So, let's move on to the, uh, first issue, and that is election of the chair and the vice chair.
And, uh, when we put this agenda together, we hadn't held the, um, interviews yet for the planning commissioners. So, um, because we only appointed two, we appointed the two, uh, new commissioners to the vacant positions. So, Chair Powell and Commissioner LeJouaz's seats, uh, they will, you will continue to hold until, um, the mayor appoints someone to that position. So at this point, uh, we'll hold off on the election of the chairperson and vice chairperson until the next two, uh, seats are filled.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right, very good. Uh, let's move on to the next, to the first hearing here. And, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask for any public comment on any items not currently listed on the agenda for this evening. And seeing none, now we'll move forward into the planning commission hearing. And this is SP 1009, WR 1004, VR 1002, VR 1004, and US 1002. This is a request for approval of a site plan and design review application for a wedding chapel, uh, and event center in the mixed use downtown district. And I will ask our esteemed attorneys to read you the information as I, um, gave mine up. I gave it up last time, so. Sorry, I didn't have to tell you earlier.
This is the time set aside for, um, SP 1009, WR 1004, VR 1002, VR 1004, US 1002. A staff report has been prepared, made available seven days before this hearing, and the criteria are identified in that staff report. If you have any questions about that, you can, uh, raise that during the public hearing. This is the second hearing we've had on this application. Um, I'm trying to find my, my reason or way that long this year. Uh, as the commencement of the hearing, under the comprehensive plan or land use regulations, uh, statements were made to those in attendance that, uh, the staff, this applicable substantive criteria have been made available. Uh, testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria, uh, or the plan or land use regulations which the person believes will apply to the decision and states that failure to raise an answer accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the board based on that issue. Uh, prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participation that may, may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, and testimony, which is how we already had the initial hearing, I don't think that applies. Uh, but we have had some new evidence submitted, so, uh, if a person wishes to, uh, leave the record open or continue this matter, they may raise that request at any time. If any person believes that there is constitutional or other, uh, issue that needs to be addressed, they have an obligation to raise this, uh, issue during this hearing. Failure to raise this issue will preclude, uh, raising this issue before the land use board appeals or in Circuit Court. This time, I will ask the planning commission if they have any ex parte contact bias or conflict of interest that they wish to declare.
Mayor with the site and surrounding areas.
I'm also familiar with the site and I have no conflicts.
Did you listen to the tapes of the previous proceeding? Thank you.
Yes, I have no bias or conflicts.
No conflicts.
I have no conflicts.
None for me. Um, Carrie, I did, um, should probably say that we, uh, the reason that Commissioner McGriff was not sitting up here is that she does have a bias, as she was the ma- uh, Neighborhood Association Land Use Chair that this is actually happening in. So I wanted to get that on the record.
I don't think he had a bias. She had a conflict.
I didn't need a bias. I'm with you. I'm sure you're not. It's just bias for the chapel. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Um, so now we just go to the staff report.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Powell. Uh, sure, Chris, help me. Uh, tonight we have some, um, exhibit standard of record. I'd like to do that quick off before we start. Uh, exhibit number one will be the PowerPoint, which you'll be, uh, seeing this evening and for the new commissioners, um, to look at the PowerPoint, there's a hard toggle, maybe Commissioner Stein will be able to show you. Um, and you can toggle back and forth between the PowerPoint behind you and your agenda. Uh, exhibit number two is, uh, Plan A 1-1, which is the first one to your left, which we realized was not part of the middle pocket, and that will be entered into the record in electronic form. Uh, this is another version of the site plan.
Do you have the message that says out of range, do not operate if this resolution is there a simple fix for that?
Um, did everyone have that?
Yeah, but it usually goes away next screen or at some point it's similar.
Is that going?
Too far away from the G line.
Still doing it? Remains coming out.
Uh, exhibit number three is a support letter and, um...
From Carrie's four. Yeah, you have this on your guys, uh, from the, uh, Oregon City Family Medical Clinic and quoted the proposed application, signed by the office manager, Carrie Spore.
Exhibit number four is the materials board, which we can provide to you on the device. Exhibit number five will be, uh, floodplain response by the applicant, and we'll get to that later part of the presentation. And exhibit number six will be recommended findings by staff regarding the floodplain section of our code. As we, uh, at the previous meeting, uh, staff presented a preliminary, uh, staff presentation, and I will really briefly go over, uh, some of the basic information on the project, and then we'll get down to some of the specifics and recommended conditions of approval. Does everyone see?
Very good.
Okay. Uh, this is some of, this is a proposal for the Abernathy Wedding Chapel, uh, SP 1009, WR 1004, variance 1002, variance 1004, and US 1002. Just to recap, the Abernathy Wedding Chapel is a traditional, uh, wood chapel to be used weekends and evenings as a multi-use event center and chapel for weddings. Uh, the seating level is 188 seats with a banquet of 100, uh, in the basement, and the mezzanine holds 36 seats. Parking is 50.4 spaces required by the application. 23 are onsite and 12 are on the abutting street. Additional off-street parking is available, and parking use does not overlap with existing office use, and Pete Walter will, uh, explain, uh, some of those issues further. This is a layout of the proposed Abernathy Chapel. You'll see the lead building on the left, which is the existing, uh, engineering office, and there was an existing parking lot, and what the applicant is proposing to do is extend that parking lot, provide additional spaces, and then, uh, provide the chapel. You also see, uh, some highlighted area, and this is a revised parking layout. The original parking layout did not quite meet our interior landscaping. The applicant has submitted a revised layout, which it does now. The zoning, uh, the parking zone is used downtown, uh, though it is abutted by quite a number of different uses. Across the street is a Tony's Fish Market, which is also zoned NUD, but the building, across the street, is part of their industrial, uh, processing building. Uh, also abutting the site are some R 3.5 residential buildings. Uh, the pace engineering building is also zoned NUD, but behind it and up the hill is zoned R 3.5 residential, and nearby is the Atkinson Park. This is an overview of the site. And you'll see, uh, 1300 shows the pace engineering building. The applicant is requesting, uh, you can either look at this two ways, either a variance for the facade transparency, and I'll toggle the next screen, or a new section in our code, which is called modifications that will better meet designing review requirements. And I'll explain both sections, and really as to the planning commission, how you want to view this, but, um, we felt that in either case it warranted the planning commission review. I'll scroll back to the variance section. Uh, the code requires a minimum 60% facade transparency on the front and 30% on the rear. As proposed, uh, there's only 30% transparency on the front of the building and 22.5 and 29.4 on the side elevations. I'm going to look at this as our new sections again, called the modifications that will better meet the design review requirements, and these are sections in 1762 that are not related to use, uh, that are really design review criteria. And if the applicant can make the case that the two, uh, both of the following are met, that A, the modification will result in a development that better meets design guidelines, and two, the modification meets the intent of the standard, on balance, the proposal will be consistent with the purpose of the standard for which a modification is requested, uh, that the body can, can approve the, uh, the application. When this was proposed, when we did our design guideline update, um, uh, staff level was considered, you know, for some reason, there was a building that was at 57% transparency or 58, but it, it overall met the, the larger intent of the, uh, program, and for some architectural reason or some internal layout reason, it just couldn't meet that 60% without having a condition that really rendered the building, um, you know, more than committed by design. Then, um, this gives staff the ability to make findings to approve, uh, this application. In this situation, with such a change of, uh, transparency from 60% to 30%, I felt on a staff level that this needed to go to the planning commission, either through the various process or through these findings. Uh, through these findings, it's a little bit easier if you don't have to make a hardship criteria. You can make the findings that it better meets or is the same. To, uh, I'll show the elevations, I'll talk a little bit about my findings on why I think on a staff level that this does meet this. This is the front elevation, which is the, and the rear elevation, east and west. On the right, the front elevation, the west elevation, you'll see that there are stairs that rise up, um, the hillside to a landing platform that go into the church. So one and a half, excuse me, so one and a half story building with a steeple and a, daylight basement. The south elevation is what you see, which is a smaller one, you see from the parking lot. And the north elevation was what you would see as a pedestrian that walked up the pedestrian path to the Veiled Garden, which is their small, uh, wedding area up the hill. This also allows for the, um, some media access to the, um, excuse me, media access, I apologize. So the floor plan, which is a general chapel layout, a basement floor plan with a reception layout, and the mezzanine floor plan. So the section layout, so you can see that the basement is daylit. And I will go back briefly to give my findings. Okay. I really see three concrete reasons to recommend approval of the transparency. One, the topography of the site, it is located up on, up, um, the hill, it's not at pedestrian elevation. The purpose of the 60% transparency is looking at commercial pedestrian interaction, window shopping, uh, and maybe an intact main street situation. This is not this. This is, um, a traditional residential, uh, chapel on the hill situation. Two, its location is at the fringe of the mixed use downtown as it meets the Magloffland neighborhood, and you would traditionally have seen a church like this or a, um, a meeting hall such as this along that intersection. And three, the architectural style is very traditional, and their window transparency for the architectural style, uh, matches the rhythm that would be appropriate. Adding, uh, commercial 60% transparency to this traditional architecture would create really an inappropriate, uh, building and really not meet the applicancy for a, uh, traditional chapel for weddings, I think, or even the, the city's need to have, you know, good qualities of design buildings. So I think pursuing a 60% transparency would fail both, both parties.
Christine? Would you consider, and this is from a architectural, historic architectural, um, the, on, on either side of those windows to the outside, would it, would it be inappropriate to put two additional windows, one on each side? Would that, would, number one, the question is, is that going to cause a, uh, architectural problem? And I'm not an architect. And number two, wouldn't that get us a lot closer to that?
Those are good questions. Um, I think I would defer to the applicant in regards to architectural structural issues, but I think, um, in this situation, getting closer to the standard, I don't think really, uh, achieves anything in this situation. Uh, you are not having direct pedestrian interaction with these windows. You are walking up a hill, I mean, up some stairs from a hill at a landing, and you were just not related to this. The existing windows have symmetry and are proportional, so adding two extra windows, well, if, if it could happen, I don't think you'd resolve anything other than saying they're now mathematically closer to the standard.
Well, the only concern I have is setting a precedent.
That's a very...
In a historic district, that's what I'm, I'm concerned with.
Right. Uh, I think if this was historic, under historic review, I think you'd be in the same situation. What is appropriate building for the site, knowing its use, its neighbors, and its location on the property? And I think bec- this is why we're sending this to the planning commission, because you're able to look at some of these more complex gray areas, and when you make your findings, kind of using potential some of the findings I'm giving you this evening, you can differentiate maybe another project that comes in that maybe not, that's not designed to the level which would, would bring it, uh, which is well-designed as this, and, uh, I think you could make findings for an alternate project and say, no, you don't meet the case, and you would not, uh, either grant a variance or, or approve under the modifications. And the power is, the rest with you as a type three hearing spotting to make these findings. And that's why we wrote this, because there's always going to be a case. You can't write code for every situation. And we wanted to say, if you provide a well-designed building that, that meets the larger, uh, goals of the city, do not feel constrained by 60% transparency, because in some situations it may not be appropriate. And that's, I think, this case is exactly what I thought was thinking of when I recommended this section of the code.
Thanks.
Uh, if anybody has any questions, I can answer them now, and then I will pass it over to Pete Walter, who will speak to some of the other sections of the application.
One other question, probably with the windows, are those, are those, uh, intention of those is to be transparent, or are they going to be a stained glass type window, or do you know?
I do not believe they'll be stained glass, and I can bring that to, um, Ms. Eisen can speak to that.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, commissioners, and welcome. Um, I'm going to talk about the three overlay districts that exist for this site. Uh, the first overlay district I'm going to talk about is the geologic hazard overlay district. Since the applicant has requested a variance to a portion of our code that deals with the geologic hazard overlay district, um, if you read the section of the, uh, geologic hazard overlay code, it talks about density, and it applies density standards to residential development. Further on down that section of code, it prohibits development over 35% of any kind except for utilities and roads and things that are to serve development. So we made a fairly conservative interpretation of that section of the code and said, you need to apply for a variance because you're proposing a portion of a patio and some pathways within that section of, of the slope over 35%. And the applicant prepared revised responses and to that, um, to address that. This, the 35% slope area is an area of fill, which, uh, overlays the native slope and was not engineered fill, it was put there at some point in the past. Based on the finding that the proposed retaining walls and the geotechnical report that was provided by the applicant will substantially mitigate that slope, um, staff is recommending approval of that variance for the portion of the development in that slope area. There will be some cuts and fills, um, within that slope area and some grading back, um, not only for the patio, but also for some of the, the paths there. And the applicant has addressed each of the standards for the, uh, cut and fill in that slope area. Uh, the second overlay district, um, is the natural resource overlay district. As you know, High School Creek, as it's known, goes, flows through the right-of-way abutting site, and there is a 50-foot, uh, buffer required from the top of bank, and the top of bank has been delineated by the applicant as, and then the way the code reads is, when you have a slope adjacent to, uh, stream, you don't measure the 50-foot buffer until you hit the break in slope, which in this case occurs, uh, right at the, uh, where the, uh, patio is proposed. The, uh, the natural resource overlay district provides that a highly constrained lot of record, meaning a lot of record where the city has mapped more than 75% of the slope within that overlay district, has a maximum disturbance area allowance. So if you have, you're allowed to develop a certain amount of that. The applicant has, based on their delineation, that it's slightly less than 75%. Either way, it's appropriate that they're going through a variance application for the maximum disturbance area so that they can be sure that they're mitigating at the right ratio for that disturbance area. The, uh, slide that I'm going to show you here, and then I'll go back to you. This slide indicates that of the total lot area of 32,880 square feet, 22,919 square feet of that is within the natural resource overlay district, and 9,961 square feet of that is outside the, uh, natural resource district. The development footprint is the red outline, that includes the parking lot that's new, the building footprint, the paths and patio on that lot. And, uh, so the total development footprint is, uh, 12,897 square feet, 6,662 square feet of that is within the Enrod. Um, the mitigation proposed by the applicant is more than twice the impact area within the natural resource overlay district, and the applicant has prepared a revised, uh, recommended plant list for mitigation. Um, it's not clear yet where all the plantings are going to go, so we've got a condition of approval to follow up and, um, substantiate where all the plantings are going to go both onsite and offsite, because, uh, some of the plantings are going to go directly adjacent to the creek, um, in the right-of-way. So there's an additional condition of approval to get a right-of-way permit, which will need to be approved by the city commission and recommended through the public works, uh, department for not only those, uh, improvements, but also for the pathway, which is in the right-of-way connecting to the pathway onsite, and for the bridge across High School Creek, which the applicant has proposed. So, all of those improvements have been analyzed by the applicant's environmental consultant and, uh, taken into account in the square footage of the impact area and the mitigation. With respect to the tree removal, uh, portion of the plan under 1741, uh, the applicant provided calculations pursuant to 1741 tree protection for the area outside the natural resource overlay district, and then provided a separate calculation for mitigation within the natural resource overlay district. Uh, what they've shown here is an updated inventory of every tree on the site, um, that, and it's about 133 trees that they've inventoried, um, and the estimate at this point of tree removal is that there would be 26 trees removed outside of the construction area, and that includes trees that are falling within 10 feet of the construction footprint, uh, which need to be removed either because they present a potential hazard to the parking lot. Those are required to be mitigated at a slightly higher ratio than trees that are within the construction area. There would be 22 trees removed within the construction area. And, uh, based on the diameters of those trees, a total, uh, mitigation requirement of 147 trees with 55 new trees onsite being planted and additional tree mitigation offsite, 92. And, um, so the revised, uh, tree mitigation plan is in your packet. Um, there are some more detailed plans with color-coded tree locations that talks about how those numbers are broken down, but all of the mitigation requirements for the tree, uh, protection have been met. It is standard that we have a, during civil plan review, we get an updated landscaping plan that breaks down the final mitigation onsite, offsite, what trees are going to be street trees, what trees are going to be natural resource mitigation trees, what trees are going to be parking lot trees. Since the vast majority of the site is within the natural resource overlay district, there's a requirement for native species, um, within that area. Outside of the natural resource overlay, overlay district, um, you can prove, you can use any plant species that is going to provide year-round greenery and is appropriate for, for the parking lot, as long as it's not a nuisance species. And there were a couple of nuisance species that were proposed and were recommended those be removed from the site plan. On page, uh, let's see. I think there's a reference to, uh, sorry, Carrie, what page number was that error on? On page 22?
24.
Page 24, um, under C.
Under C.
There's an error.
The last sentence. Non-native plants on the list will not be used outside of the Enrod boundary, which should be, will be used.
Yeah, so non-native plants on the list, um, will be used outside of the landscaping area. Oh, so that's one correction. With respect to the, uh, parking lot, the applicant did revise the parking lot to provide the minimum 10% interior landscaping. Sorry. And, uh, the dimensions of all the parking spaces have been revised to match our dimensional requirements for standard and compact spaces. They'll be providing 12 on-street spaces and 43 offsite spaces. The lead building, which is the office use, is used Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. Uh, will be no overlap in parking for the majority of the events that are held at the Abernathy Center. Uh, the applicant also has significant parking at the Abernathy Center offsite, uh, which can be used, although it's not necessary to meet a parking requirement. So, let's see, the... The requested Enrod adjustments are, the adjustment criteria are contained within Chapter 1749. The applicant has requested two adjustments to the natural resource overlay district. One is for what we call non-exempt trails. In order to be an exempt trail, you have to meet certain criteria. You can only be certain width, 4 feet, and, uh, be made of pervious materials and various other things. Uh, in this, and in this case, um, and you also have to be set back a certain distance from the top of bank. Non-exempt trails have to be set back 50 feet from the top of bank, and subsequently they're requesting an adjustment to that code criteria. Uh, they are proposing a slightly wider trail than 4 feet, it would be made of pavers, uh, to try to increase infiltration into the ground. Um, they've provided a series of responses in, in, in response to the adjustment criteria, and they have been met. The second adjustment is to the maximum disturbance area for a highly constrained lot of record. Um, as far as we can ascertain based on the calculation in our code, um, the 12,000 square foot number, um, is about as high a number as you could develop within that district, depending on how you calculate it, and it's somewhat ambiguous, so it's appropriate that I just probably apply for variance. In the future, staff is going to revise that section so that it's clear what the calculation actually means. And I think that if you're going to say that this is a, not a highly constrained lot of record, the amount of mitigation proposed and the amount of impact area proposed is, is appropriate. David Evans and Associates reviewed the... David Evans and Associates reviewed the report by environmental technology consultants and was uh happy with it with the proposed mitigation. They provided some recommended conditions of approval, which we're inserted into our conditions of approval as well. So the final uh overlay district is the floodplain overlay district. And there's some non-structural improvements proposed, um, including trails, a bridge cross, a stream crossing, and the very uh lowest portion of the base, the patio, which is not, not a habitable structure. Um, it touches the one-hundred-year floodplain boundary. And so the applicant has prepared some responses to the flood management area standards in response to that. Um, as far as the construction standards for those improvements, like the footings on the bridge and the pathways and the anchoring that's required, those are typically reviewed at the time of building permit. However, and what the applicant has to show for compliance with that is balanced cut-and-fill within the floodplain and balanced cut-and-fill to the extent practicable on the site. And Tom Sisal can talk to you more about that. Um, we've prepared some recommended findings for compliance with seventeen forty-two one sixty, which is in the packet there. And uh, we're confident that the applicant can meet that balanced cut-and-fill requirement when they submit some civil plans. And with that, staff's recommending approval with conditions. Um, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Um, any questions to staff? I uh, I do, I've got a couple, actually. Um, yeah, I noticed in the David Evans material, uh, as I was reading it over, they mentioned that the trails um that were, that were, that they had talked about in the application were um made of the brick, I believe. And I, I, maybe I read it wrong, but it seemed to me that in the David Evans document, it said that that would not, that would not meet the requirement because it didn't, it didn't meet our requirement of being pervious material. And I didn't hear anything that said that was, and they said that's not acceptable.
I think the applicant has described how they would provide no crusher finds underneath the pavers, and there would be no grout used. Um, it is a, it's not like it's a gravel path where the water just soaks right in and that sort of thing. Um, I think a lot depends on how coarse the material is that's between the pavers and below the pavers and how finely compacted it is. Um, so to the extent that it can, that the water runs off that paver and into the crack, I think it's reasonable to call it a pervious material. Um, but I think the most important aspect of this is that they requested a variance for the impact area and will provide appropriate mitigation as if it was a impervious path. Um, so there's nothing that says you can't propose an impervious path within the natural resource overlay district, as long as you get a variance for it and you do the appropriate mitigation. So to the, and the applicant's also described how the path will be used as um in order to justify the adjustment. So um, they've talked about how it would be couples walking to breasts during a wedding ceremony and that sort of thing. And uh, it needs to be graded a certain way. But um, they can probably address your question in further detail as well. I feel that it's uh, it's an okay material to use there.
And, and, and David Evans, they reviewed that and that didn't, that didn't be an issue? That wasn't an issue with?
Well, in terms of them reviewing that material, they haven't. Uh, we can certainly uh
As you can read the letter from Sisal, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Uh, second question I have is, and I don't know that I've seen this except maybe in the Safeway application, but the shared parking lots, I'm interested in that. So as long as they don't, as long as they don't happen at the same time, you, and you have the owner's approval, you, you can utilize those spaces to really.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't materially overlap during the same time of day. And the applicant presented a pretty detailed analysis of how the, those spaces are used by the Lee Building. And yeah, you can justify that towards not having to overload your parking um for uh a use that's not at the same times.
It did, I, it makes sense, I just, I don't recall ever seeing an application for that except the shopping center, so. That I can remember.
I've done it a few times.
A couple of times, but usually you don't have the pleasure to be able to. I mean, it's something um, as a city, we like to encourage more shared parking. It just rare that you have those two situations that that can work. A lot of times they want to share parking, but both your uses are at the same time. So it's not, you'd have to remind them that's not really shared parking.
Maybe that's the thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does the project meet the parking standard as a standalone project?
Uh.
Without shared parking?
Without separate parking.
Um. Uh, if they counted parking within a thousand feet, which they chose not to propose, they could probably meet the parking too. We would um do the Abernathy Center parking.
Is it, they're seating for two hundred people? And there's one space per quarter person?
I believe it's one space uh
Quarter of a person?
Quarter, quarter of a space per uh
Rush over, sorry.
Per
Uh, to answer your question briefly while we look at it, uh, there are many ways to get to our parking requirements. And so you start kind of with the base number, and then you say you can do it, you can utilize budding on-street parking, you can utilize shared parking, you can utilize parking with a thousand feet if you, you know, there's all these different ways. So I guess the answer is they met our codes specifically and do not need to request any variance or adjustment.
I, and I'd wait, I'd much rather see reciprocal parking meeting the standard than creating more parking, you know, immediately adjacent to a, to a resource, that's for certain. So you create, you do that, it's great.
Right, the, the use calculation is for existing office space, you've got a minimum of two-point-seven spaces per thousand square feet. For chapel, mezzanine, banquet hall, assembly-type areas, uh, point-two-five spaces per seat. Um, a hundred and eighty-eight seats in the main area that requires forty-seven. Um, and in the mezzanine, uh, nine, you get a ten percent reduction within, uh, because you're near Washington Street, um, which is a transit corridor. And that brings you down to the fifty-point-four minimum spaces required you can get. And you get credit for a budding on-street parking that meets dimensional requirements. So those spaces that are parallel parking on the street have to be twenty feet long and immediately budding the yeah.
Is, if, does anybody have any other questions about parking? If, if not, I'd like to answer, ask it to the mark.
I don't have any questions. Please, go ahead.
Okay, um, I was just curious, um, I was looking at the grading plans and steps. I was wondering just how, how tall or how much elevation change there was going to be from the original pad to the created pad to put the church on.
I don't think we have a slide that shows the grading. The geotechnical report has that standard, so I can
Really, why, I have to, because in doing design reviews, you know, you just never get used to the way it looks on the plan and the way it leans up out of the earth when it's finally being built. And it's always a shock to me when, and, you know, even today, even with the plans that I agree today is still, wow, I didn't realize it was going to be that tall. And just want to make sure that we've reached that value here and kind of just get a good idea of what we're looking at in terms of mind.
The way our building height definition is defined, um, it is finished grade at the, at the front elevation at street level, average for finished grade
Okay.
Um, to the highest point. Uh, and in this case, the highest point is the top of the spire, I believe. Yeah, which is sixty-five feet or slightly under.
Okay, great, thanks.
You're, you're safe.
Okay.
Okay, that's it for staff, and at this time, we'll bring up the applicant. Thank you.
I don't, I, um, going through myself.
Please, for the record, anyway.
I'm Jessica Iceland with Iceland Architects, and I'm the architect.
I'm Sisal. So is Gary.
Thank you.
And I, I don't know if you want any kind of introduction. I, I think we've covered, you know, the partners have covered our introduction to the project. So if it's acceptable, we'd be happy to answer some of the questions that you might have at this time.
Sure, unless there's something else that you want to cover, that's, that will go up to questions, it's fine. Uh, questions to the applicant?
Yeah, I'll start. Um, in the historic, uh, the historical view, uh, there was a question about the windows. And I, I never saw an answer on what the, what the windows would be, that, what are they made out of?
In terms of whether they're stained glass?
Yes, stained glass and just the frames.
The windows will be work frame, metal clad on the outside. Uh, there will be some use of stained glass, but the, the main portion of the window, which on the, the south and the north elevations will be an operable window, will be transparent glazing. On the front elevation, um, you mentioned you had the question about the potential for adding a second window on either side of that entry. The difficulty that we have is that we have an elevator and a stairwell on that uh section of the building. So if you look at those two front windows, if you're looking at the west elevation, um, the far north side or left side of that elevation is where the elevator occurs. So there really is no possibility of, of adding a window there. Uh, the windows as they are right now, the, the, again, the body of the window, the, uh, the two square panels will be transparent glazing, and the arched transom portion will be a stained or opaque glazing of some kind. And part of that is you get, if you look at that elevation, the mezzanine level is occurring basically in the middle of that window. And what we've tried to do, the reason that we ran those windows up higher was to get the, the vertical proportions that were, would be appropriate for that facade of the building. But because you have the mezzanine, we had, we basically had to run that so it'll run in front of the mezzanine framing. And so therefore, it'll be some kind of spandrel or opaque glass.
And the dimension from, if you're looking at this that we're all looking at, on either side, right or left, from the, from the corner, from the side of the wall or the, from the edge to that window, how, how far, do you have any idea? It appears to be maybe ten feet.
Uh, I think it's less than that. Let me see, it's probably, I'm guessing about eight feet. Because again, essentially, if you look at the plan, there is an elevator in that corner of the building. And it is, uh, it is nine feet from the corner to the center of the window.
I see, okay. So from a, this is just an architectural, but from an architectural standpoint, um, would it, would it draw off the entire balance of chapel to have a window there? And I, and I understand what you're saying, you can't put a window, but there are, and that's why I asked, was going to be clear or not, whether you can put a faux window or the, you know, that's right, you can't parent the option.
Sure. Um, I, I wouldn't say that it would be incorrect or throw it off balance because again, you'd have to look at, you know, every, you know, every potential design on its own. Um, but what we were looking at here is really trying to create a vertically proportioned window. So again, the wider that we got, the more difficult that would be. And, and really, in, in our opinion, to try to get that, the, the look and the feel of a traditional, you know, chapel, we really needed to have the verticality that, those proportions. And that's why we stayed with a single window, um, to try to get that on the
And I, and I like, I mean, I like the, the look of that. I, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, myself, I'm, I'm looking at this from, say, Washington around a corner there, and looking up, and the windows along the side seem to be a little closer together. And so as you, as you go up the hill, you, you, you transition from those ones that are close to each other on the side, and then flip to the front, and then you only have one window. And I, I'm just wondering, from, from a design standpoint, if that looks like there's a big open eight-to-nine foot space with nothing in it. And I, you know, that, I'm not, again, I'm not an architect, thank God I have these guys here that can talk about that. But that, that's, it's just from a design standpoint, really.
No, and I can, I can appreciate that. I, I think, again, sort of as Christina mentioned, this is, in terms of the transparency, for us, this type of building is really an inwardly focused building. I mean, by its nature. And so in some ways, having any windows on it is, is difficult because you have a potential for distraction and glare and all of the, you know, sounds and everything to be transmitted. So it, it's, it's kind of a, a fine balance that you have to try to, to meet in order to have something that's aesthetically pleasing from the outside and somewhat inviting, but to really serve the purpose um of, of the building that you're designing. And also, again, looking to try to, to, to fit within that, that, you know, there's sort of the parameters of a, of a traditional, you know, chapel building, which, which is more of a, you know, of a, of a closed and not a transparent type of, of, of building, so.
Well, and I mean, the reason I'm asking all this is because we've had two chapel slash church applications over, in my time here, and both of those gave the same, kind of the same issue you had. And we as a group said, well, you've got to meet the requirement. So it's up on South End Road, they, they met their, what I think you are going for here is, is a, is more of a historic look. And I, and I think that, I'm just trying to get my head around that. And I want to make sure that, you know, we, we allowed it in a couple, and, and why are we doing that? And I, you know, for me, it looks more like a historic, and that's why I'm going to have some historic questions and whether, whether it makes sense. And if somebody else wants to build a chapel in, in town, you know, I, I just want to make sure we are our basis currently there. Any other questions of the applicant at this time? You're a quiet bunch.
Okay, real quick.
You look familiar.
Yeah, thanks. Good to see you, Dan Fowler, Bergen City. Um, I just wanted to maybe add a, add a small comment. I think the design is perfect.
Quite good.
Um, and I think the, we really tried to make it a traditionally chapel. I appreciate all the things you're saying internally, internally, Jessica pointed out what's there. So it's, it wasn't our first thought to put windows where we couldn't from a functionality standpoint. So if you look at the distance between the windows, even on the side, there is a fair amount of distance that, that's hard to, to double scale. But um, in my opinion, if we added windows on the front, it really makes it busy between the porch and the corners, and we don't want busy. Um, so that's, that's again, opinion, you know, but um, Jessica mentioned the transparency. We're not positive about any stained glass. We may have some opaque or some solid colored glass at the top. Um, fine line between not having it be a church, but having it be really truly a chapel, and not defining it too religious, but yet having it feel as whatever a person wants it to be. Um, the um, um, I don't know if it was noted, but we own both properties. So the shared parking arrangement is for themselves, it's a separate company. And we will write that permanent into, we actually have a driveway easement we're creating. So that, that will go with the property, so that will never revert, which is always kind of a, a question I have on shared parking and what, what happens when it sells someday. But we'll make sure that didn't happen. Um, and um, I just wanted to make sure I hit all the questions you had. The um, the offsite trees and the, some uncertainty of that, um, isn't because we didn't want certainty at this point, but um, we weren't exactly sure where we will plant all of the offsite trees. Uh, we've offered to put them in some parks. We've offered to put them at Singer Park by Holmes Lane, it's a big grass field. We've offered to put them along Abernathy Creek. And so we're going to work those specific things out with parks and staff and planning, and then better define the trees that are needed in the specific location. So it's not because we didn't want to define there, so.
Mr. Fowler, you had a question about the pavers? Did you get your question?
Well, I, I kind of got my question answered from staff. And, and, and I guess my, my, always my question is when, when the, when I get a letter from David Evans that says it's not going to make it, and then, and I didn't hear anything different. But it sounds to me like the way you're laying it out, that it will be pervious enough to meet the requirement.
Yeah, but I don't think they said it wasn't. Uh, what they said was, is the, the portions we have for use pavers, which may not be considered impervious depending upon the city's definition of pervious surface.
Okay.
So they didn't say it wasn't. And basically, we're
So they didn't say it wasn't, and, and basically, we're going to use open grated rock rather than sand even, because we can run across sand. And, and I think the largest scale that a solar system's been used is with the Port Vancouver part, I think it's the Toyota Distribution Center, where they did the entire surface in, in pavers with gravel, so, so it can be done.
Oh, sure, uh, no doubt, I'm, I'm sure it can, I just want to make sure, because it's where it's at in the district, makes perfect sense, so. Okay, very good.
Tim, one more?
One more question.
I'm, I'm looking at a 2.1 and 2.2, and I'm standing in front of the church, and I'm looking at the steps, and there's about 12 of them, so it's probably, what, about an eight foot rise up out of the street, somewhere around there? And is there, is it a hillside, or is it terraced, or, I'm just wondering how you get there from the street to the church? And what's, that's, I'll get all the. So that's the landscape plan there? Okay. Yeah, okay, and that's trees in front of there to kind of mitigate the look of the hillside.
There will be some terracing in front, you see so much groundwork, you see on the left side of that picture, isn't this all flush? It actually comes out towards the street, maybe terrace. And then, um, the, if you look at the side elevation, um, the north, or shoot, the south side, uh, where it's the flattest coming off the existing parking lot.
Right.
We really, um, we were caught between, you know, obviously making that elevation work with the existing grade there, but keeping the basement out of floodplain, that was really critical to us, so, and it actually, it worked out pretty well, and that's pretty true with the, um, it's only, you know, maybe 18, 20 inches off the, the, uh, the grade, it's, so it's, we've kept it as down as low on the site as we could without encroaching the floodplain, is that, would be a fair way to describe it?
Yeah. Yeah, great, okay, thanks.
All right, any other comments while we have the applicant? Well, all right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, um, at this time I will call, uh, for, uh, let's see, we have citizen response here, so I have Denise McGriff, representing the Magalufman Neighborhood Association.
Thank you and good evening, Denise McGriff, Magalufman Neighborhood Association, and I'm hoping the third time will be a charm with this particular application, and I say third time is a charm, because this is the third time that our association has reviewed it. Uh, we had a presentation by the applicant, uh, back before the, uh, recession came, and the neighborhood was very, uh, supportive and very positive about the proposal for the chapel. The Magalufman neighborhood became the neighborhood of churches after most of them moved up from downtown and due to flooding and other problems. And we have probably about nine to 10 churches in our neighborhood, and although this is a non-denomination of chapel, it has the look and feel of many of the churches that are in the Magalufman neighborhood that are traditional, uh, buildings. With the exception, uh, I was just consulting with Ms. Mori, the newest church in our neighborhood probably is the one that's on, uh, Seventh Street, that's got the fence around it, and it's the one that's in the worst shape, it's been condemned, as I understand. But the other ones seem to be old and patin', are working, uh, fairly well, and have had some new congregations come in and out. We think that our previous review of this was that we think this, this facility, the chapel, is very compatible with our neighborhood, it is very compatible, we think, historically, and we were real happy to see that the, the, the windows and some of the detailing on there, again, are reminiscent of many of the buildings that are in the neighborhood, including the stone that you see, and uh, just the whole proportion and scale of this particular building is, is really appropriate and will fit in. I think the thing that, uh, I wanted to compliment the applicant's consultants on is that the application was extremely thorough, even the, the revisions were very clear to understand, and it makes a lot of difference when you're doing a review. We want to support the variance request for the windows, because again, I think as staff explained, this is sort of a unique building. It's not really, uh, the same as the churches that you reviewed on, out on South End, against the context of this particular facility and where it sits in our neighborhood, our historic neighborhood, and we think that it's, again, it's an internal issue in terms of the windows, all the activities, we'll say, is it going to happen on the inside? People are going to go by and look at it, and I'm sure there'll be many, many photographs of, of, uh, events and weddings that people will take from the outside, but I think mainly, you want all of that stuff that's going on in the inside. We did see in the packet that, uh, we had an adjacent neighbor who understandably was concerned about traffic and concerned about parking, and I think that with the idea of the shared parking, which we, which, uh, the applicant told us about two years ago, that that's going to be mitigating some of the issues, of course, you always have the late people who will show up and try to find anywhere to park, because they won't know, but we're hoping that it will not impact the, uh, the neighborhood and the people that are the residential occupancies, which, uh, at least three of them on that side of the street are historic. Other than that, we want to, uh, express our support for this application again for the third time, and we hope that, uh, you will see fit to approve it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, any questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Of course you may, please, come on.
It was just thought to my attention of, by the owners, that in looking at options for windows, they would like to, uh, get approval if possible of, of potential to use a fiberglass window. And I, I don't, again, I apologize for this being late notice, and the thought is that we would like to have the opportunity to uh, run this through staff, to get staff approval in the event that the owners choose to use a fiberglass window. I don't know if you're familiar with fiberglass windows, uh, much thicker, it's not, it's not a vinyl window, it's a stouter, thicker window, it's got, uh, uh, wider sash, but again, the idea would be that if that is acceptable, we would run it through the staff and get staff approval. Otherwise, we would understand that we're approved for metal clad wood.
What, would, I guess my question would be to staff, would that require going back through HRB?
Uh, that's a valid, that's a Magalufman Conservation, my recommendation is staff, um, seeing, uh, this, having the planning permission approve metal clad wood and/or fiberglass at this time, and then just allow the applicant to work with the members and find the most appropriate, I don't think, uh, those, those two material options, I think, were both appropriate for this, uh, application. And let's just, I recommended to get this added in the CV, and so there was no question if they came back to staff later.
So you're talking about fiberglass and not PVC, correct? So you have something in mind, then?
Well, I don't have a particular manufacturer in mind, but I just, um, they're becoming much more common, and, and as the owners have mentioned, metal clad are becoming less common, and the fiberglass is, we're finding in, in commercial applications is, is a really good option to use.
And the two divided light with a paintable surface on there, or is it?
Yes.
Is it?
And, uh, just aside on the short review, and we, the short review is looking more favorably on fiberglass for historic than construction as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say, thank you. Okay, um, do we have anyone, I have no other, uh, comments, do I have any comments from the audience, uh, at this time? No, saying none, then we will close the public hearing at this time, and bring it up for the, to the commission for discussion, and decision. And I, uh.
Well, I, I, I like the, uh, traditional architectural style of, of this, as a traditional chapel, I think that, um, the design team and the city staff have done a great job of, of dealing with a difficult property, it looks like. Um, I agree with, uh, staff's, um, finding that, um, as far as the facade transparency does better meet the design review requirement, um, and it needs to get to the standard, um, so, um, I like the idea of, uh, of doing shared parking, I think that's a good, uh, solution to that problem, and I have a problem, um, allowing the fiberglass windows.
Okay, thank you.
I think if we're going to make any attempt at meeting the transparency standard, you have to change it to architectural design entirely, into a beams or sunroof or some other kind of building, and I know you guys don't want to do that, and I think that adding additional windows would probably go against the Gothic nature, which is speaks of simplicity and austerity and all those kinds of things, so I, I don't, I don't think that would make any sense either. My only concern really was with making sure that the front of the building, any exposed elevations that have large amounts of hillside, be adequately landscaped with trees that cause the building to nestle, as we like to see them in the, in the east, and that's pretty much all I've got, so.
Thank you.
Um, I'm in full support of this, and I'd like to, um, I'd like to say, uh, to this, a huge kudos, this is, uh, whenever people try and copy history, they usually don't do a very good job, and you can usually see right through it, and as an architect, and somebody looks at this stuff all the time, I just have to say this is outstanding, it's great, it's really a great project, so. I also think that this chapel, you know, all great cities, uh, throughout the world have, 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 have great churches and chapels downtown, and I think, um, in, in their urban situations, and I think this is just going to be a huge asset for our city.
Uh, I, I agree with, uh, all the previous comments, and, and I think from my point of view, uh, the proportions of the window for this use are very appropriate. Uh, I think the 60% transparency is, uh, as the applicant, uh, indicated, uh, more intended to deal with the retail setting where you had, uh, foot traffic, and you're trying to create that connection to the pedestrian. Uh, I, I think the use certainly justifies the, uh, per, the proportion of windows for this, uh, design, and and I, I agree with the previous comments, I think this, uh, design fits the neighborhood and the site very well.
And I agree, I think it's a quality proposal, uh, should be worthy of passing today. Well, I think it's a perfect design. Because, because I'm outnumbered, no, I, I agree with that beautiful design, I, and I agree with everybody else, it's, it's a good application, and I think it fits, and I, while I was concerned a little bit about the comments that we received from the, uh, neighbors, looking at it again and reviewing it and looking at the, the, the opportunity for parking, I, I really don't see that it's an issue, I don't expect it will ever be an issue, really, so, um, I'm open for a motion?
We would, we would.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. We would request that, um, you do adopt as part of your findings, the additional, um, uh. Recommend. Recommendation provided by Mr. Walter concerning the flood, flood management overlay district for 1742 compliance.
Okay, and then that will, and then we'll also include the fiberglass as part of that. Okay, so, we're still open for motion.
I move that, uh, we accept the proposal, uh, with the, uh, proposed variances and adjustments that have been, uh, noted by the planning, uh, staff, uh, and that, uh, we, we approve the application as submitted. Say it.
Okay, we have the motion, and a second on the floor. Pete?
Commissioner Stein? Commissioner Groner?
Aye.
Commissioner Luswah?
Aye.
Commissioner Tidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Eske?
Aye.
Chair Powell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Correct, correct, everything was in that.
Includes the 1742 and the fiberglass.
We can break that individually, if I could, that to be any time. We're all there, we're all there.
Thanks for doing that.
Thank you. Hold on. I just, well, any other issues with the commissioner's team, okay, and you know what our next meeting is at this point?
Uh, the 24th.
Okay, all right, anything else, we're adjourned.